We have your six permission to modify floor plan to downsize the Emporium. Create a separate proposed restaurant, southern premises, local and regional. Good evening, sir. Our station name and address for the record. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of board, my name is Vincent Tramaco Jr. I'm a attorney for the app.
Mr. Tramaco, as you know, we've, we met last month on this. And have also followed up on a couple of occasions now to go over the application as was submitted last month. And I think the entire question was not one of the restaurant being a good use. I think the entire thing was around the occupancy, which is a good thing for everybody, to cut the occupancy back on the Emporium. And to see a fine restaurant open up within would be nice. And I think that's a win-win for the village. But I'll let you go ahead and explain exactly again, for the record, exactly what it is your plans are to do. And take it from there.
Right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you've seen from the plan submitted, about one-third of the Emporium is going to convert to a separate and apart restaurant, which will have an outside entrance now to the south that will go directly into the restaurant. The event center will have the north entrance. You will not have access between either businesses. And with respect to the occupancy, which is the issue, I think, that came into question, they did a, they did a survey of the event center space as well as the restaurant space. Irrespective of what the actual occupancy based on square footage came to, we're willing to agree as a stipulation in our approval that we will limit the occupancy of the event center side to 900 and the restaurant to less than 200. That should satisfy the downsizing nature of our application. If there are any other specific questions about the two businesses or how the places are to be laid out, I'll be happy to entertain them.
To review the occupancy issue, I have from my notes from last month that currently the Emporium occupancy is capped at 1,300.
Yeah, as, that's interesting because of the event where we had Donald Trump come. They reassessed the floor plan and the occupancy based on the fact that we had, we had previously removed the bowling alley section and that was, that was area occupied area. So for that particular event, they had come in, reassessed it, and it was 1,300. So now, the event center area as per stipulation would be a max 900 limit in occupancy. And then separate and apart, the restaurant would have a max of, let's say it's 199. Whatever, we haven't really agreed on the number, but it would be somewhere south of 200, just less than 200.
Well, what's, how does this impact your business plan?
The, with respect to which?
The smaller venue, what does it do for the types of acts that you have there? You know, what have we seen in the past with and we're not going to see going forward?
What it does is it actually helps, it helps our business, and Mr. Laredo explained it, I'll explain it.
Just for the record, just for the benefit of those in the audience.
Certainly. When you, when you book an act, the act, the value of the act or the price of the act is direct proportion to the number of occupants you can put in your space. They actually require us to send them copies of our occupancy plaque. And then they will, they will actually determine what we would pay for the act. So if we're over 1,000, let's say, we would actually pay more for the act. And it's not necessarily proportionate to the amount of money we would make that night. That's one benefit to our business. The second benefit is the reconfiguration of the space, thereby reducing the occupancy, creates the illusion that there are more people there. The problem with the space now is that if you put, let's say we have a 500 or 600 person night, which is typical for a Friday night, let's say we have one of the local bands come in. We will have 500 or 600 people. For us, that's a terrible night because the way it's laid out, if the people are so separated and scattered about the large sprawling space that it appears to be not crowded, believe it or not. When at the same time, you could walk into Meatball or 89 North and they'll have 300 people and it'll look completely packed. I don't know if Meatball would go 300, but 89 North certainly would. And they look packed and people want to hang out and they like to be kind of close to everybody. They like to, they like, they like to look like there's a lot of people there, all their friends, hey, this place is happening. So as far as that goes, it gives us more opportunities for different events. You can, you don't have to book events that would require you to put 1,300 people in. Some of these acts are so expensive that we have to book them every so often just to raise money. Now we can have smaller acts more frequently, actually be more profitable and not have these massive shows where you have a strain on parking and security and police presence and everything else. So, you know, from the villagers' perspective, the impact is going to be less. Even though we may be open more frequently, it'll be spread out over a period of, over a period of days. And of course, looking at the restaurant, which is going to be open almost every day, that's creating cash flow. And it's more of an in and out, people go in and eat, they leave, and it's a more circulated flow of people. Again, creating cash flow eliminates the need to have these blockbuster shows, if you want to call them, which is a big pet peeve, I think, of the village and the local residents. So I don't know if that accurately answered the question.
So then the thought, then the proposed downsizing would probably preclude an act like, let's say, Rick Michaels or 50 Cent. They probably would not come to the new proposed smaller Emporium. Is that accurate to say?
Uh, I don't want to say, I don't want to say they wouldn't come. It might be, it might discourage them from coming. Rick Michaels, more likely than 50 Cent.
Is the plan as a business model to be more?
50 Cent were less likely to come than Rick Michaels.
To be more like Steven Talkhouse or 89 North than what you pretend?
Well, you're still, you're still so much bigger than those places. And I think the reconfiguration of the space is really where we're going to benefit. Because the shows that attract the 1,300 person occupancy are so few and far between. We hear about them because of the impact they meant. We really don't have that meant, I would much rather have, you know, 10 shows a month where I have 600 or 700 people, a nice crowd going, than have to have one show where I'm packed to the gills and, you know, things happen. You know, and there are different types of, different types of events. More rock and roll shows, they don't, they don't attract as many people as certain other shows do. So, you know, the real, the real benefit to the business and the benefit to our future business plan would be having that restaurant open every day, circulating business, creating cash flow, and then allowing us to be a little more creative on the other side with events. And don't forget catering, which is a major part of our business. The 900 person occupancy allows us to get those big parties in, which are very low impact for the village, you know. A large bar mitzvah, it's kind of, it's kind of funny everybody to know, 900 person bar mitzvah, but it does happen. And these sweet 16 parties are getting more and more extravagant. And, you know, that, that allows us to have that many people in there so we can do the big parties. We can, we can do smaller, more, more localized events and again have the cash flow of the restaurant operating, you know, every day and separate and apart from the event center. We can have a full, you know, the restaurant going, everybody eating till 1:00 in the morning and not be disturbed by either a party, a private party going on or a concert. And they can do both, somebody can go out for dinner or a show. That's something we lost out on and it was, it was kind of, we started out doing it and people were coming and it wasn't working because the dinner, the dinner crowd ran headlong into the show crowd and, you know, it really wasn't comfortable for people to eat. That's why we really don't have a regular restaurant there. And it's a shame because it's a big waste of a nice facility.
So, um, oh, I'm sorry. We, I don't remember if we've gone over this through our session or previously, so excuse me if you're repeating this. So just to clarify, you will have two separate entrances?
Correct.
Two separate signs?
Correct.
So that whatever the name of the restaurant is will be one sign and then the Emporium will be the other sign?
Two separate storefronts.
Two separate storefronts.
It'll appear to be, it will be two separate businesses. Although, on the inside, which nobody really will be able to see, it will share one large kitchen. The kitchen area, the kitchen storage in that facility is tremendous. And we don't even use it to its maximum potential now.
I just wanted to state that in the last 20 years, there have been two similar types of operations. One in the village and one out. And they both have the same goal, which was to have dinner and then have, you know, club acts. And what happened to both of them was, one of them in the village had a shooting and was shut down by, I guess, the S.L.A. and the village. And the other one outside of the village had so many problems with violence that they had to close because of the S.L.A. And I know you have put a lot of money into this building and the business and I know you're trying to make it profitable. But it's a concern of all of ours as a community and as board that, you know, we don't want to see that happen to you and we don't want to see that happen to our village. And that's why I'm asking you as many questions and trying to put it all on the record because even though you're downsizing, it's a huge issue. It's a liability for you.
We, we agree, and that's why we proposed this. And, you know, as Mr. Laredo said the last time, and we'll remind the board that we had this plan on the table for a while because of the situation that seemed to be evolving. Okay, so it's really, it's a, it's a separate restaurant. It's not like a dinner show. You wouldn't really, you wouldn't have that. The, and the restaurant, the motif or whatever you want to call it of the restaurant is going to be a very New York City style comfortable, it's going to be, it's going to be modern like what you'd see in Williamsburg now, what's popping up, hipster type place. Where the young, young people can go and not feel that there's no pretense there. You can go, you can go casual, you know, families can go early, people will be staying late, you know. Sort of like what you see at Taproom, but maybe a little more high-end. That's what we're looking at.
So you want to make that restaurant stay the way it is? You're not opening the doors at 10 o'clock to?
Oh, absolutely not. There are no, there are no doors.
I know Mr. Rocco can attest to probably quite a few different places that have, you know, done that and then it's been disastrous.
Not, not at all. In fact, we're doing the opposite of that business.
There's no, there's no communication of the restaurant to the rest of the thing?
Right, I think that's what I'm trying to say.
None whatsoever. Absolutely.
So it's not like they can open the door and?
Right, right.
They would have to go outside.
Have to go outside.
I want to make that so clear on the record that that's your intent.
Let me make it clear. That is not only the intent, but the business model moving forward wouldn't work if you could do that. We don't want that at all. The folks that want to go into the, this new style type hit restaurant are not going to want anything to do with possibly what's going on next door. And we don't want them to be alienated by whatever show's going on. So if we got country next door, you know, I think country's great, love the crowd. I can't stand the music. I might want to hang out in the, in the bar, in the restaurant bar and have a burp, you know, and not be disturbed by the music. So that's the play. You can have two separate and distinct operations going on. And don't forget, the event center is going to be dark most of the time. That restaurant's going to be going and moving constantly. There's, there's a great benefit to the business when you can have cash flow and, and, you know, create the ability to pay your employees and pay your bills. And then when you have a show, you're not so stressed to have one of these large, big impact shows.
Well, I think that's, that's it.
Right, so the opposite of what you were just concerned about.
Right. And I think when you first opened, you had a lot of, you know, the country acts and the, you know, maybe the older rock people come in and it was an older adult peaceful crowd.
Right.
And like other places, it becomes, you start bringing in different acts and?
We want more, we actually want more.
And you're not the first one, so I'm just?
We would like to have more of those acts that you're describing and by having that reconfigured venue with this lower occupancy. Because frankly, the, you know, I'm an older person, I mean, I, we don't want to be, we don't want to be in the, you know, thousands of people. We just, you know, want to go and have, you know, and enjoy a show. You can't, you know, it expands the amount of possibilities for us. It actually does. So even though, you know, you call it a downsizing, but the types of acts you can have there and the types of clientele become more diverse. And we love the diversity that we're able to have there now. You know, one minute we would have, you know, 50 Cent and then Donald Trump shows up, okay? But we, I don't want to be pigeonholed as to one type of place, okay? You want to have certain, and you want to, you want to create that diversity because you want, you don't want to alienate one sector of the public. We don't get a lot of young folks, like that, that type of Taproom crowd. We don't get that. We need to capture that, that hipster type act.
Would there be any focus entertainment in the restaurant area?
Only, the only thing we would allow, and we want to limit that, because we don't want to create competition. Okay, we're not competing with ourselves. So there would be no, the live music would be limited to like an acoustic guitar player. You know, maybe a guy just, you know, hanging out, having like a coffee house type music set to entertain.
Piano bar kind of thing.
I'm sorry, piano, yeah, it could be a piano, sure. That would be something that would be nice. Because you don't, again, you've got that next door. If it's a Friday night and you want loud music, you go next door and get it.
Okay, so just for the record, come 10 o'clock Friday night, the tables don't get piled up in a corner and all of a sudden you got 400 kids in there going nuts with whatever?
Absolutely not. 400 kids can go in.
So it's a restaurant? It's going to remain a restaurant?
Correct.
It's not going to be part of a smaller nightclub?
No.
It's going to, it's not going to do like some places currently do where they pile up the tables and chairs and turn it to a nightclub when they came here and put on the record that it was going to be a restaurant?
And I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Chairman, because we are the only venue in town that actually has the proper permitting for a cabaret restaurant. Exactly what we're doing there, we come to the board and ask, and that's, and that's a very good point that you make. We don't need it because we have a large event facility on premises, okay? We don't need to mix that.
That's why I wanted to?
Oh, absolutely. And if you think about it, we want people to eat dinner and eat dinner late and think about this too. We're going to be open late on the weekends for dinner and for food. We want people to have an option when they're coming out of, let's say, a show. They go in and have something to eat, which is something they can't do now. So that's another benefit.
All right, counsel, just one other thing for the record. Right now, the reevaluation of the property, not the Trump evaluation of 1,300.
Correct.
But was reevaluated based on the square footage available of 1,265 occupants. That's interior, exterior, all around every place, 1,265. But for the record, you're saying that you want to limit, that you agree to limit the Emporium venue to 900 and the restaurant to somewhere south of?
200.
200, approximately 200. I'm not sure exactly what you are concerned with.
That is correct.
200. So you would take the, the total area down. Right now, we could have 1,200, by law, we could have 1,265 screaming kids. Not that there's anything wrong with that. So you have to scrape them up off the street. 1,265 screaming kids at the Emporium venue as per law right now. And that will be reduced by 365 down to 900 maximum.
That's correct.
And you agree to that?
We do.
100%?
100%.
900 and 200.
Okay, and then 200 in the restaurant. Agree to that?
We agree to that.
Okay.
Mr. Sir, are they open already?
They have to go to ZBA and whatever the notice.
They're pending.
Great.
Something I couldn't remember.
And I just want to also make sure you understand that's interior and exterior. The garden out in back, we, we hold everything together.
All together.
Good. Over and out. We've gone over the applications. Anybody else have any questions?
Counsel, you mentioned, just want to clarify this, you mentioned the cabaret license. Is that saying you tend to apply for one? You don't sound like you said you had one for a restaurant that exists.
We reapply every, every year.
For the Emporium?
For the Emporium.
That's right, that's all you know.
Correct. And again, the reason I said that was we have the dancing and music establishment on premises.
My good chance. Thank you.
And your point is well taken about the fact that the tables and chairs, I understand. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, counsel, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to before against the application? Yes, sir. I'm forward to say your name and address for the record.
Really, Mr. Chairman, Richard Kemp, again, I am opposed to this application, okay? Uh, I want to bring it to your attention. I am a lifetime resident of the Village of Patchouli. I have seen many changes, both good and bad. From the day the Emporium opened four or five years ago, or whatever it was, it has been one of the worst nightmares in the history of Patchouli. There have been drunken people, there have been fistfights, there have been very bad things going on. It has gotten to a point of where the owners employ people from out of state who come here to fire weapons in the air. It has gotten to a point of where the Suffolk County Police now use the Village of Patchouli as a training ground for police officers to pick up DWI, people driving cars. This whole business is just too large. It is in a residential neighborhood. This whole business, over the course of the day they opened, there has not been an improvement. It has been declining, getting worse and worse and worse. And the complaints from business owners, from residential people have gotten larger and larger. And the complaints fall upon deaf ears of the mayor, the board trustees. And the basic, the bottom line is this whole place is just too big. There is not enough parking. There have been complaints from apartment complexes where, because it's village property, people who had these apartments find their parking spaces occupied by people who are visiting one of the local establishments. And then the Patchouli Village Constables tell them, oh, we can't do anything because it's Patchouli Village property. So this, this whole concept of the Emporium, and I think you should consider the history of the way they have operated in the past, what they have done to make things better that has not worked. This is four to five years. Things have gotten worse and worse.
Mr. Kemp, I know there's been lots of problems associated with this establishment as others and I know where you live, so I understand. You feel the impact from that.
And it's also a safety issue.
No question about this. There's been issues with this establishment and others as long, down those lines. I'm very well aware of that. However, this application that we're considering tonight is not whether the Emporium stays open or closes. It's whether the, whether they can continue to do business the way they are now, which we have no control of. They're already open, they're not going to be closed. We can't close them. Or whether we can improve the situation. And what they're actually coming to us with is an improvement over what currently exists by lowering the occupancy. Perhaps some of those problems might be mitigated. I can't swear to that, but it's certainly better to have a 900 person occupancy than 1,265. So that's what we're considering here, as to whether to grant them the ability to reduce their occupancy. And I made it abundantly clear to counsel that we, that that would be the occupancy and he agreed to it. So what we're talking about here is going from 1,265 people to 900 people, which is an improvement of 365, if my math is correct, over what currently is allowed to exist at that location. So what they're looking to do is make improvements by changing the business model. That's what we're considering tonight. I don't disagree with you that we're a victim of our own success here in the village and that certainly when you have more people come into an area, problems are going to happen. We can't, we can only do the best that we can to try to mitigate those issues. This is one way perhaps that we can, can make this particular venue a little bit more neighborhood friendly. Does anyone want to be 100% neighborhood friendly? I know they do their best to try to regulate the crowd, but we can't account for every soul who comes to. I mean, we just had small bars in town with a handful of people. Invariably, on a Friday or Saturday night, a fight would break out and there'd be issues. And maybe it didn't impact as many people because there weren't as many people in town. But wherever you have people and you have alcohol and you have people out having a good time, invariably there's going to be an issue somewhere along the line. So our question here before this bill tonight is not to whether the Emporium should be open, should be closed. That's not the question. The question is, can they petition us to make some improvements to the venue? And I think that for myself, that the math works from 1,265 to 900 is?
Almost 30%.
Is, is, yeah, 30% reduction in the number of people who are going to go to that part of the venue. Granted, there's going to be a restaurant, but it's a restaurant. A restaurant is very different than a, than a music venue. Plus, the ability to not have the same acts that perhaps they had that drew elements that perhaps weren't as cohesive with the neighborhood as they should be, might be an improvement. I can't say that it's going to be. But I can tell you this, that if we don't act or if we deny this application, the Emporium still has the right under the fire codes to have 1,265 occupants in that building. And that would be an argument that I would suggest you take up with the village board because we certainly can't shut it down.
I've been before the village board of trustees, I've been before the zoning board of appeals. And to expect me as a resident to appear before each and every board to express myself is, you know?
I think you expressed yourself very well. And I can't argue with what you said, and I won't argue with what you said. But what's before this board tonight is, does the occupancy go from 1,265 to 900? And the way that math sits in my mind, that that, the less, the less number of people that can get in through the door, the less number of people you have to create a problem. And I think that's what we're looking for.
Well, let me ask you this question. I'd like to know, how can you entertain a, an application when you don't even have the proposed name of the restaurant before you?
The name of the restaurant is in the material, Mr. Kemp. No, it's not like we don't name restaurants. It's going to be a restaurant, it's going to be this size, it's going to have this number of tables in it. We don't name restaurants. Maybe they're going to name it the Kemp. I don't know.
No, no, no.
Kemp's Kitchen. Now, all serious, all kidding aside, your points are well taken. And I think the owners are trying, are trying? I think that the, and I think the owners are trying to mitigate some of the problems that you mentioned because they're very well aware of them. And I can tell you firsthand, they're very well aware of them because I know they spend an extraordinary amount of money and security to try to keep those crowds under control. They're tired of the big crowds, they're trying to get down to a smaller, more manageable crowd. I think that's a worthwhile goal because we do not have the power to say to Mr. Tramaco and his client, you're out of business. We don't have that power.
Oh, you most certainly do.
No, we do not have that power based on this application.
Z.B.A. does then?
Not this board, we only, we can only deal with what we have in front of us. So I would suggest you agree your comments to them because we don't have that power.
Well, who deals with the one year special?
That would be the zoning board of appeals.
Zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Fusser.
All right, I, I still think that based upon the history of this establishment and what they have done that has not worked, you should be taking that into consideration because the way they have operated in the past is going to carry on to any future operation. And I think that you should consider that in your consideration of this application.
And we will, thank you, Mr. Kemp, thanks very much, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak before against the application? I want to say a motion that the public hearing be closed.
So moved.
I don't even know. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second, but this is, who was in favor?
Aye.
So opposed, so carried, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, folks.